You got your microphone?
Yes, sir.
Well, we are calling the order. This is second meeting of the Rockingham County Commissioners for the month of June. It's a pleasure to see you, all of you here. We've got some very -- this is a very special evening. It's kind of emotional for me. I always like to see things done for veterans and also some real heroes from Rockingham County. So, we will start our meeting tonight. Check your phone if you would to make sure we don't have any inadvertent noises there. So, if you check your electronic devices, that would be helpful. Tonight, our invocation is going to be given by Lance Metzler, the county manager. When I'll ask you to stand for that in a second, I'm going to ask Reese Pertle, if he would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, let's start our meeting tonight by standing and having our invocation.
If you will, please join me in prayer. God of power, might, wisdom, and justice, through your authority, is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Sit us with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, the Board of Commissioners, and other government leaders of Rockingham County. May they always seek the ways of righteous, justice, and mercy. Grant that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our county with honesty and integrity. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, you've had the agenda for about 10 days, but actually a little bit more than that since time and a chance to review it. I would seek a motion to approve the resolution, excuse me, the agenda, and as necessary, adjust it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and add items one and two to new business. Do I need to tell you what items they are? Approval of a subordination agreement between Rockingham County and Carter Bank and Trust and 287 Partnership. Also, Golden Leaf Foundation approved funding 500,000 gallon elevated water storage tank in an amount of 2.2 million.
Commissioner Travis has given us a motion to approve the agenda with two amendments?
Second.
And second? Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. It's approved. Now, a very special evening for all of Rockingham County to recognize one of its heroes, one of its senior heroes. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Berger to take the lead on this. And as Commissioner, let me tell you how we're going to orchestrate this in a second. Four of us Commissioners are going to come down on this side of the wall. Commissioner Berger is going to be on the other side of the wall, and we're going to ask you two folks to come up at that time. And I'm going to ask our county manager to read the resolution. So, as soon as we get to place, would you do that?
Yes, sir.
You ready? Resolution honoring Riley R. Rankin on his 100th birthday. Whereas Riley R. Rankin was born in Rockingham County on June 29, 1920, and whereas Riley R. Rankin was in the U.S. Army from September 3, 1942 until January 19, 1946, serving in World War II and being honorably discharged with the rank of Staff Sergeant. And whereas Riley R. Rankin married Marjorie McCain in 1948, and they had three children. And whereas Riley R. Rankin worked at Cone Mills at the White Oak Plant, retiring after 30 years of service. And whereas Riley and Marjorie Rankin recently celebrated 71 years of marriage in December 2019. And whereas Riley R. Rankin is of the Methodist faith and a member of St. Paul United Methodist Church and was devoted, a devoted member of the American Legion of Reedsville. And whereas Riley R. Rankin was enriched, has enriched Rockingham County by faithfully serving his country, his community, his family, and has been a longtime fan of the Atlanta Braves. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor Riley R. Rankin and expresses its appreciation for his decades of service to his county, to his community, and declares June 29 as Riley R. Rankin Day in Rockingham County. Happy 100th Birthday, Mr. Rankin. Adopted this day, the 15th day of June 2020.
(APPLAUSE).
Mr. and Mrs. Rankin, it is an honor to have both of you here tonight. I know you're a lifetime. You have witnessed a great deal in the United States, and it is a privilege that we have tonight to meet because of the service that you've given this country. It's a privilege to have you here tonight, and we certainly appreciate everything that you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Mr. Rankin, also, on behalf of the county commissioners, we have here for you one of our county lapel pins, and as a brave fan, it's my honor to give that to you tonight. So, you can carry this, put that on your jacket, and I'll give this to you later. And you can wear it as a prize anywhere you go outside of the county. Thank you.[406.19][406.19](APPLAUSE).
If you'd like to say anything, I know you've got a lot of people here that support you, and we'd be glad to hear from you.
No, I ain't got nothing.[421.28][421.28](LAUGHTER).
He said, "We're glad to be here. We thank everybody for coming."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Thank you, thank you, thank you.[436.53][436.53](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for your service.
They're not going to ever skip and come back.
They're not going to come back.
Can we get them a few minutes to take some pictures?
Yeah. Let me get to the microphone there. We had already spoken to them. We didn't want to tax your family and Mr. Rankin too much, so you may take your time, get you all the pictures you want.
They want this in the background.
Commissioners, I suggest we go ahead and get in the background. The missing party has shown up, so we'll be ready for the next one.
Really appreciate all of you being here tonight.
(INDISTINCT)
Thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Let me get to the microphone there. We had already spoken to them. We didn't want to tax your family and Mr. Rankin too much, so you may take your time, get you all the pictures you want.
They want this in the background.
Commissioners, I suggest we go ahead and get in the background. The missing party has shown up, so we'll be ready for the next one.
Really appreciate all of you being here tonight.
(INDISTINCT).
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 Hey, Charlie. See if they wanted a picture with the highway patrolman together. That's pretty amazing. I'm glad the right folks were there.
We should have some coffee.
Yeah, you should have.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you being here.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good luck. All the best. That's scary. Scary automobile fire. Well, gentlemen, I think we're ready to move on to the rest of our agenda. And that is item seven, consent agenda. You've also had that for ten or eleven days at this time. It consists of items that are generally non-controversial and are handled in a routine manner. However, if the public or anybody else has specific questions, please direct them to Lance Metzler, our county manager. Otherwise, having reviewed the agenda, consent agenda, we would look for a motion to approve it as provided.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And second. Further conversation or questions? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed by nay. Nobody signed up for public comments, so we will move on to item nine. Lee Cochran, our economic director, if you'd come forward.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to be doing our second public hearing for the CDBG, so the Community Development Block Grant of $2.3 million for sewer extension for what was Project Optic, that it now is for Ontex and the South Rockingham Corporate Business Park. And from this, we will also, the total for the sewer project is 3.235, so $3,293,500. And of that, $993,500 will come from the county, and then 2.3 will come from the CDBG Community Development Block Grant.
Okay, if there's no more conversation, I'm going to declare the public hearing open. And solicit any comments that might be available from the public. And Mr. Manager, would you confirm nobody has written in about this?
Yes, sir, and everybody's written in.
With no written comment or anybody here to add to the public hearing, I will declare it closed. And I think at this time, we are ready. We don't need a vote? We do. Counselor? We need a vote?
Make a motion.
We have a motion there to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Thank you, folks. We appreciate all of that. You have something else?
I just want to clarify. The motion to approve is to approve all of the things in the agenda packet, which would have been a resolution approving the administrative guidelines policies, resolution to submit.
Everything in the agenda packet.
Okay.
Why don't we, just for the minutes, what all does Jennifer need?
Do you have one sheet or more for me to sign, is the question?
It can be one. I just want to make sure it's covered and kind of in the minutes to...
I amend my motion to include all four items included in the agenda packet.
Okay, I think it's best to get it clear.
That's correct. And there's a resolution approving the overall administrative policies, resolution to submit, that's the key, get the application submitted. And there's a few policies that you're having to re-adopt, that you've adopted several times in the past with CDBG projects. But these three are the only ones that are changed a little bit. All the rest of them have stayed the same, so we don't have to re-adopt them. But those three are assessment policy, fair housing resolution, and project budget ordinance.
All right. Confirming with the other four commissioners that you understand that his motion does reflect all four items as delineated by Mr. Bill Lester.
Yes.
And the second stood, and the vote stood. So without any disagreement from the crowd, we'll move on to item 10. Dr. Shotwell, you're traveling incognito since I last saw you.
Sir?
You're traveling incognito since I last saw you.
Yes, sir. I lost her razor about five weeks ago, so it's a little different. Probably summertime's not the best time to try.
I've heard it said that a beard does not a Santa Claus make.
Well, gentlemen, thank you so much for having me here. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here to request a reallocation of the $100,000 that we requested originally for a chilling tower. And if you would indulge me just for one moment, just to let you know how we arrived at this point. Originally, we requested the money, the $100,000, it was going to be for a 200-ton chilling tower that would have been able to easily retrofit either at Rockingham County High School, the main building, or at the, at Reesville High School Auditorium. The problem with Rockingham County High School was there was not enough tonnage. It needs about 75 more tons to handle that size building. And so that left Reesville High School Auditorium. The reason we picked that was because it was, it's getting close to end of life. And when we looked at the, at the savings that it would have, we could easily recoup the savings of that, of spending the $100,000, because it was going to save us about $16,000 over and above what we're spending right now per year for that unit. And the unit was going to be used. So the other thing was, this unit was normally over $200,000. And, and it was a company that it was designed for, it was not large enough for them. And we were under the impression, and so was Johnson Control, that they were willing to sell it and wanted to sell it. And so we were the first takers. Lo and behold, they decided that they're going to hold on to it. And so, you know, that kind of, that kind of brings the question back up about why we're not pursuing something else to go in its place, because it would be over $200,000 to do that. And right now, we're not having any major issues with that unit over there, and we feel like we could get a few more years out of it. So we felt like that this other pressing issue came into play, which is South End Elementary School. One of the things, and Mr. Richardson and Mr. Metzler remember this from several years ago, you all were invited to participate in our land use study, where we had different planners from all over the county come together. It was four years ago, before we did our redistricting plan. And since that time, a lot of things have changed, because they looked at the conditions that we had back in late 2016, early 2017. And what has happened, that when you look at the Mall Street and the South End area, regardless of whether UNCG is in charge of it or not, there's approximately 126 more children living within that zone than was even projected to be there from the original study that we had done. Because at that time, the apartments over by Foodline had not come out of the ground. And so they had a formula, what they were going to use. Well, one of our buses that goes through there fills it up with about 60 kids in that one stop, going through those apartments. So we feel like there's been more children that moved into those apartments than had been originally anticipated, and also other areas of Reesville. And so with that being said, the overcrowding at, at South End is not necessarily because we've, we had to have an attendance zone, and we made it South End. Because we did that because we were also picking up the kids for UNCG with our transportation. And so we felt like that that was a better way to utilize our transportation, and also still have the same feeder system for middle and high school. And, and the other thing that we put out there was that we really wanted to find out what our community wanted. And when we gave them the choice of moving the fourth and fifth graders, or possibly just the fifth graders, to Reesville Middle School in a, in a contained pod, the resounding answer to that was no. When we explained to them that there was also a possibility that we could redraw the lines, I think we presented two different options, the resounding comments from the community and parents was no. They said we'd like to have additional space. And as you know, we were looking at some new units, we looked at, we even looked at a lease, both of which are really ultimately cost prohibitive, especially when you think about how, if you could sell those units later. And even though the gentleman said the depreciation even after five years is not that, not that great, it's still a used, multi-use trailer. So what I did was, I sent out an all-call to the 16 superintendents that are in our region, and asked them if they had any trailers that were available for sale. And we found three over at Yadkin County. My board has also instructed me to try to find a fourth one, but we did find three that really all they need is to be transported, set up, new carpet, painting, and then a decking and a covered walkway. And part of the regulations is that we have to be within 200 feet of access to a bathroom. And we do meet that qualification. Our, our rough estimate for at least the three units that we had was around $63,000 to include everything, because one of the requirements that we have is to have, provide footing for all three units. And so that, that added a little bit more of a cost. The gentleman said that he could bring each unit for $7,500 to, from Yadkinville to us for $7,500 apiece, and then we would do the rest of it. We also asked the possibility of Clayton Homes, of doing a turnkey for us, so that our maintenance staff is not taken away from projects from all the other schools this summer, and, and let them concentrate on that. And, and with that, our board resoundingly said that they would like to pursue that. And so I, we explained to them that we would have to come back to you all and ask for permission to reallocate those funds. Also, any funds that are not being used would also be used for painting some of our existing schools, some of the main hallways, and also covered walkways that you see. And we would have a local contractor perform that for us as well. So that's, that's what I'm here today to present, is to ask your permission for that and answer any questions that you all may have.
Gentlemen, you've heard the story? I think we've heard it before, but any questions now?
Have we, Mr. Chairman, Lance, is, if we already, is, what's our balance in their restricted account, their restricted sales tax account?
Right now, it's roughly 2.7.
Is that... It's, yeah, it's projected that, because I know with this year's allocation, I think it was 1.6. All that's been obligated.
I know at the end of next year, it'd be 4 million, close to 4 million.
And is, is this encumbered in that amount, or has this already been transferred over to the school system, this $100,000 that we're talking about?
No, it actually stays here, and we paid for it and then asked for reimbursement. So...
Is it encumbered in that amount, or do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Again, are you somewhat referring to, since it was dedicated for the chiller?
Yeah. I just figured it was probably an encumbered amount, but with that balance, with that balance, it's not going to really make, I mean, it's...
I was going to also tell you that we still have the money that's allocated for the track. And while the bid came in, you know, over $100,000 under, I'm not ready to risk that opportunity here to move that money over to do something else, either for the chiller or for this, because they're still looking at the track. And there might be a chance, they may have to put an extra half-inch or three-quarters inch of asphalt around there, which could be another $50,000 to $75,000. So that's kind of where we are. And an update, our press box looks really good. It's, it's getting the finished touches. The outside of it is complete at this time, and they're working on the interior.
And, Mr. Chairman, Rodney, is there a, do you and the board have a long-term solution to the short-term fix that you're, that you're coming before us today?
Actually, actually, we do. One of the things that the board did at their last meeting, and I appreciate you bringing that up, I've got all these notes, but I forgot that one crucial piece. So, thanks, Mr. Pearl. What we asked for was that, really, from this point on, we're going to ask the, the group out of NC State, ORAD, to come in on an annual basis and work with Lee and all the other planners within the county on an annual basis to keep our plan up to date. What they're doing is, we're asking them to come in, and they're going to deliver a, a land use plan to us in December. And at that time, I would have a better confidence if there was a, if we were going to redistrict, and why, and have a reason. And the reason I say that is that at this time, Williamsburg stays almost at full capacity, or just a little bit over. Bethany is over 500 students right now. Huntsville is at 450, 460, and that, I see that changing too with, with Collie Brook coming online. And then there's also been some other housing developments that are being put into place that could also maybe possibly impact South End or the Monroton area. And when you look at that, then that leaves Lincoln over here in Ruffin, and then it leaves Wentworth. And during my 14 years here, I have seen Wentworth get to capacity, drop by about 70, stay that way for about two or three years, and then back up again. And what we're seeing right now is they're dropping next year. There's going to be about a 40 student difference. We've got about 100 fifth graders that are leaving. And I've got about 70 kindergartners coming in, and I don't have a fifth grade the same size. I just felt, I would feel more comfortable looking at, at a long-range plan for utilizing the space that we have. Also, that would also include the city of Eden as well.
Mr. Travis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Dr. Shotwell.
How you doing, sir?
Fine. I understand the need at South End. A question I have is, why are you putting a chiller on the back barn burner? It, when you came before us to ask that, it was a desperate need then. So it's still a desperate need. So why wouldn't you ask for a little bit more from your restricted fund, just go ahead and take care of the chiller and this problem, instead of putting it on the back burner? Let's go ahead and fix the problem, since you already know it's there.
Well, right now, we were dealing with just the money that's allocated to us this year. And so at, at the beginning of July, we'll sit down with Pat, and we'll come up with, with, because remember, our quest is 2.8 million in our capital. And I know that's not what we're getting. So we've got that two minute, actually, it's more than that, but we're looking at about $2.8 million in projects next year. I've got some roofs that are really more pressing than even that right now. And one of the reasons that we came to you was that, I mean, that was just a deal that you couldn't pass up.
Right.
And actually, the bid came in for installing it and everything at $88,000. You know, I mean, it was, it was kind of one of those no brainers at the time.
So do you have a list of all your capital projects and, and a list in order you want to accomplish?
We do. We have them with HVAC, roofs, and I forget what the other category that we set aside in there. So yes, sir.
Can Lance get a copy of that?
Sure. We'll be glad to send that over to you. I wasn't too sure if that was included in the budget book, but I'll double check. But if not, I'll have it to you tomorrow.
That's all I have. Thank you, Dr. Shotwell. I have no problem.
Other questions?
As far as some of your other school buildings in the regional area, have you looked at the cost of upfitting those to get students back in?
We did look at Losterville, you know, and, and when you look at the cost of putting in these mobile units, and then looking at how much money you would have to spend at Losterville, I mean, it's going to need a new boiler, a new roof. It's been, the old part of Losterville has been sitting idle now for almost five years. So, you know, a rough guess, and then we'd have to repopulate the kitchen. I mean, that would be secondary to the roof and, and the boiler. But there would be a few things that we would have to upgrade over there. There'd be some asbestos removal as well, because some of the tile are starting to, the nine-inch tiles are peeling up. But you're probably looking at about $2.5 to $3 million for that one building there. When you look at Score, the old Booker T. Washington Building, even before it was an alternative school, and after it was being used as a high school when we were segregated, it was used as an intermediate school. So it was for fourth and fifth graders. And so you'd have to do some retrofitting in there with some of the bathrooms for the K2 children, because the, the facilities are not to their size. And you'd have to have some covered walkways and some handicap, handicap ramps and access to the building.
Well, I personally think it makes a lot of sense, what you're doing. We don't know what's going to happen to the population, school population in the coming year. There may be some attitudes changed in amongst the parents, having gone through this COVID.
Yeah, one more comment. Rodney, this is a, just a, kind of a 30,000-foot perspective. But, you know, my, from not getting into the weeds, one of my concerns is, is that ORAD group, is that it, ORAD?
ORAD, yes, sir.
Just decided three years ago, come and recommended we close two elementary schools. And now we're going to call them back and tell us to put some temporary classrooms outside elementary schools. And that's a, I mean, I think that's a fair question that the folks out in the community are, are going to ask, and going to ask us, and, and, you know, what's your 30-second response to that?
Just 30 seconds, okay. I feel like I'm on Final Jeopardy now. Well, what I would say to that is, is that, like I said, nobody projected that there was going to be such an influx of, of elementary-age students coming into Reesville, even when that study was done. Because I can show you the, the 10-year projections for both of those schools, Mall Street and us. And, and it's not anywhere, it's 126 short of where we are right now. The, the reason I would say this is because this is about as efficient of a, if you had to say quick fix, to deal with it, because, you know, otherwise, we were going to have some classes that were going to, there just, there's no more room. We've moved everybody who even had a classroom to have a classroom. We've actually cut the media center and made two classrooms out of two-thirds of it. So we were running out of space. The lower class size, you know, we're going down one more student requirement, which meant that South End, based on the projections that they had, we're going to need two more teachers in the, in the primary grades, which that's where it's affected. And also, you know, some folks might say, well, you're having a Spanish immersion class here, why are you doing it? And you've got overcrowding. Well, the, almost 90 to 95% of the kids that have signed up for it already lived in the South End's zone. So we're offering a program, and it also allows to have a higher class size, because you've got to have that, because you're going to have some attrition over time. So, you know, I would say that I would rather do that than to make a rash decision of, you know, because people get upset about two things, their money and their kids. And we're messing with both. But, but in this case, I just feel like it's just really important to do this, at least temporarily, until we have that land use study and have somebody come in there who is looking at the 30,000-foot pitcher and saying, to this board, this is, these are our recommendations.
Well, I appreciate it. And like I said...
And I know that wasn't 30 seconds, sir. Sorry about that.
Well, this is restricted sales tax money, and it's, from my perspective, it's the, the school board's responsibility on how they best see to, to expend this. They're stewards of those tax dollars, just as we are.
Mr. Travis?
One quick thing. I know you're going to be looking at the whole big picture of the schools with capacity. I mean, I know, what, Monroton's at 67%. Reesville Middle School's at, what, 70-some percent?
Yes, sir.
I think you're right on line. If you're looking at drawing different lines, I think that's probably a good way to go, especially in that little area, especially with Monroton. And I think, if I remember correctly, I can't remember, Whinsburg's not, not very full.
No, Whinsburg is...
Okay. It's getting there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they, they consistently use, have over 500 students.
So what's your timeframe on looking at all this? Or are you hiring an outside consultant? Or...
Yes, sir. It's, it's the group from NC State.
Okay.
And they, they have no openings this summer, because we asked them that first. But they could do one this fall, and that's when they're doing it. And so I feel like that we could have a recommendation after, after it's presented to the board, that we could come back to you all in, in late winter, before we get into the budget season, and talk about what, what are the different options, and what, what a lot of the folks are leaning towards there. And at the same time, just like Mr. Metzler said, our, our reserve fund is increasing, because Bethany was paid off this past September, and so our only debt right now is Douglas. And that's going to be there until 20, I think it's, there's three different fund sources that get paid off. One's going to be paid off in 2024, the other in 2027, and the other in 2030. And once that's done, every year, we're starting to get into the black. It was that one year when we were doing the pool, Mr. Travis, that you remember, that we were in the red and had to go just a little bit, had to, had to get a little bit of help from y'all on that.
Right.
That year. So, so there, there are some opportunities there. But I also want to say too, there's also a lot of roof needs.
Well, I just know, I, I mean, I know, I can't speak for everybody on this board. I know we would love to be able to give schools a whole lot more money into what we can.
Absolutely.
But I think you understand, we try to give as much as we possibly can. I mean, we, we know you've got needs, like track and tennis courts and stuff like that. I just, I know it's a struggle for you and your staff to figure out ways. So I, you know, it's also a struggle for us to figure out ways to, to do everything we need to do. So, but I appreciate you looking at it. I mean, every, every avenue you can go down and look and see if it saves taxpayers' money, that's the best way to go. Thank you.
And I just want to say to, to you all, thank you so much for holding us at the same level. That was very welcome, and it's a point of pride, because I know that I have other districts that are taking cuts right now. And so for you all to make that commitment to us, made a huge impact for the kids and the community here, and you all should be commended for making that. the community here, and you all should be commended for making that as a priority, because you know that with economic development, what's done with education is going to have a huge impact on what you're going to be able to do on the other side there. And I want to be part of that journey. We all do. Our board is right on board with you all on that, so we're very appreciative of that. And you all have always been very open, and you also have been, I hope you felt the same for, when you give us suggestions, that that same courtesy has been given back.
Let me ask you real quick, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. I know the school year is, you know, working hard on an upcoming school year, and I know a lot of changes are going to be making, taking place. When do you think you can come back and give the public update on what their schools might look like?
Well, just be-
We would love for you to come back and be on TV and explain it, show a slide.
You've got 30 seconds.
So, basically, what you're saying is you're asking for the exclusive interview.
Yes.
Okay. I got you.
We'll make room for you, Crystal Ball.
Yeah, we'll make room for you.
Okay.
He wants to know if you can read Lloyd Cooper's mind.
That's right. That's what I want to know.
I'm just shaking my head.
But thank you so much. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if y'all need anything, please let me know.
Right.
Yeah, we need a motion on this, Mr. Chairman.
We do need a motion.
So, moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Here none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, next July? This July coming up?
Yeah. I'll be back over here in July. I'll let you know what's happening, man.
Thank you, Dirk Chubb.
Y'all going to buy all the plexiglass that we need, right?
Yeah, we're going to try that. We've got a company in Reevesville to help you out.
Yeah, I go in all these restaurants and stuff, and I see the different ways they've got their plexiglass up. I said, "Y'all mind if I take a picture of this?"
Just called for point of order.
Anyway, thank y'all. Go ahead and do it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much.
Mr. Berger?
Yes, sir. Thanking our excitement to recognize Mr. Rankin, and also the gentleman that saved the life of those two that were here earlier. We did skip over, actually, a vote to adopt the resolution to honor Mr. Rankin, so.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded. Further discussion?
Thanks for that point of order, Mr. Berger. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Yeah, that made the evening, wasn't it? These two recognitions.
That was awesome.
Great stuff. We're going to move on to item 11, and we're going to ask our astute engineer, rather than Kerry Spencer, to-
Now, give me a say, you look a little bit different, Kerry.
Thank you, gentlemen. Astute engineer, that would probably be Bill Lester, but you got me instead. Tonight, we've got a short presentation regarding extension policy, and with us is Eric Woolridge from Destination by Design. He's worked on some of these ideas, and he has a short presentation. I'm going to turn it over to him. Once he's finished, I just want a couple of quick notes about budget and then things like that for the board to consider with this, with the extension policy. But I'll turn it over to Eric for his presentation.
Good to see you, Eric. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Good evening. I have presented to this board before, but it was over the phone, if you may recall from, what was that?
Right.
Maybe two months ago or so. Kerry was clicking some slides for me, and I was presenting. So, my name's Eric Woolridge, Destination by Design. We're the firm that's working on the countywide land use plan and the unified development ordinance rewrite. Okay? So, we're moving along in that process. Oh, I'd say, what, six weeks ago or so, Lance and team got on the phone with me and asked that I kind of shift gears a little bit, and kind of hone in on some of the infrastructure-related things first, and with that, help hone in on some of the policy work as well. Inside your packet, I provided a really simple presentation to you all that laid out a few key questions, and I'll just kind of go through those real quick. As we try to get towards what would an infrastructure policy look like for you all, particularly for unprogrammed infrastructure expansion, okay? But before we get into that, we wanted to talk about, one, is where are your target growth areas? I think that last conversation was pretty timely. The fact is, is the south end of this county is going to continue to grow and be impacted, particularly if you all adopt a land use plan that's kind of pointing in that particular direction. Secondly, we wanted to see, how much infrastructure capacity do you all currently have right now? And then, how much capacity have you already committed? Okay? And then, how much capacity do you all have to reserve in order to meet your growth goals? And then, at the end of that, you all have an amount that's there, and the question becomes is, what's the county's policy for expanding infrastructure and yielding that capacity that's outside of those target growth areas? You're already running sewer, water, in specific areas. I mean, that's a done deal. We know that. The question is, is what's going to be the policy for y'all expanding off of that system, right? Okay? So, inside that presentation, which you all may have seen, was the future land use map, which I went over with you all two months ago or so, right? It shows like where you're looking for growth, we're looking along the corridor and so forth. Inside that presentation also provides you all with an infrastructure capacity analysis. All right? So, I just want to go over this real quickly with you all before we go through the different policy recommendations. This is critical information. Shows how much water sewer capacity you all have, how much you've already committed, and then, I think, from this information, you all can make a good decision about how you all want us, as consultants and staff, to move forward. So, gallons per day, GPD, 700,000 is what's going to be available to you once all the MOU agreements are signed and so forth. GPD that's used to date on the water side is 35,000. You've already committed to four different, sorry, five different projects, okay? Gold Hill, Aheron, or, is that Aheron? Aheron. Colley Brook 1, we've got Colley Brook Farm, and also Optic, which is now called something different.
Onyx.
Onyx, okay. So, those are already committed. So, if you, we go through there, and we look at the gallons per day related for water for each of those, and sewer, we can see those numbers there. I talked to Bill a little bit earlier today, and it looks like some of the numbers are going to be a little bit lower, so you are going to have a little bit more capacity. Speaking with economic development, looking at where have you all reserved, where do you all need to reserve your capacity? We got the Carroll Site 2 that's open for industrial, or Carroll Site 2 that's open for economic development at some point in the future. There's up to 400 acres that the EDC knows that can expand for different economic development opportunities. Bill can speak to this more than I can, but to what extent will those be water users is a big question mark. So, this number could be high. It's certainly a conservative number. One thing that we are recommending is down along Bennett Farm Road, in accordance with the future land use map that we presented two months ago, is how do we really take advantage of the water and sewer infrastructure to raise up density, to pull in some more housing units, get enough housing units, enough rooftops that would actually drive some commercial development? So, everyone's not just going over the line. So, we are trying to hit a certain amount of rooftops to generate that private sector commercial development. And that's when you are going to see the tax real, the tax benefits of that. Now, that's a very pertinent question about the school system. If you all adopt this policy, and you run water and sewer, and we try to aggressively go after rooftops, it's going to impact this. This is why you've got to pull in commercial development, and why, when you start building a whole lot of residential communities, the ROI on that's really hard to meet once you start counting in policing everybody and EMS and school system. It's a very difficult ROI. But if you can get to a certain threshold, you can start pulling in the commercial elements. So, what we would suggest is, over the next 10, 15 years, you are trying to hit a target of 800 more dwelling units down in that area. Probably very achievable in that kind of timeframe. Then, in the one column here, under the reserved, kind of to be determined, we say opportunistic connections. You start running a sewer line down there, there's people that already have businesses, homes, and so forth, they're like, hey, we want to tap into that. So, you, we all need to reserve some amount for those types of connections. We put in here an equivalent of 750 dwelling units, which could be businesses, could be homes and so forth, which equals to 150,000 gallons per day. Again, maybe too aggressive, maybe we could lower that. So, when we run, looking at your total capacity, what you have committed, what we think is reasonable to reserve, you can already see that you all have a negative number here. You don't have enough capacity to do what we've laid out here. So, we're going to have to make some policy decisions. I want to hear from you all about what's a priority from you all. I think that we've also got to, you know, get our, sharpen our pencils and figure out, hey, what's the priority? But I think this is a pertinent question, as you all start talking about where you're going to let water and sewer start expanding to. So, with that being said, as the backdrop, we presented five different, I think it was five different options for you all, as it relates to, it's actually more. No, it was five options for what we call an unprogrammed infrastructure expansion policy. I call it unprogrammed because you all have a program. You all have a growth strategy of where you're trying to drive water and sewer for job growth, economic development, and the like. The question is, is when someone comes and says, hey, I want you to, you know, do this or that, you all are wanting to have a policy in place. So, I'm just going to make sure that we're all trying to answer the same question. Does that seem reasonable in terms of our approach to the project? Okay. So, we provided five different options. The option one was the return on investment cost share, and option two was the tax increment reimbursement. I believe, Lance, correct me if I'm wrong, but a meeting or three or four ago, you all presented some of these options that I had put together.
Yes, very similar to that.
Yeah, okay. Option three was the property lien option, where you all would actually hold a lien on the individual plats that were divided into the amount you all used to expand the infrastructure. And then, once they, 50% of those properties got a CO, then you all would remove those liens. So, it's another option. The bond works very similar to that. And then, option five, as is in your packet, is the target growth strategy, where you say, hey, we have a plan, this is where we're running water and sewer infrastructure, this is what we're trying to do from a land use, economic development perspective. If developer, if you're trying to expand outside of that, it's going to be on your dime. But you all, from a policy perspective, have said, this is how we want to grow, this is why we're trying to grow this way, and anything outside of that just doesn't make sense for us to pay for ourselves, because you all have commitments to meet these different target growth strategies. So, those were the five options that I put together. I'm obviously not going through all of the different items pertaining to each of those, but with that, I wanted to kind of step back and see what questions you all had about those various options, or the capacity analysis and the like. And if I'm missing anything, y'all need to look inside.
Okay, gentlemen. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the key questions that, of the five beginning questions that were, at the beginning of his, at the beginning of his PowerPoint, I think there's a six key question missing, and that's the availability of resources at the time of the request. I think that's going to drive our decision-making of the, this board or any future boards, is, one, what resources you have available to address the request, or the willingness to, for, to take on debt service to address the request. So, I think that's something when we, when we talk about these options listed that we keep in the back of our mind, that that's something that we'll have to consider, too, is that all these are going to be, that's going to weigh into the decision of this board and any future board.
I agree with you, Mr. Pirtle, but in two ways. Resources in terms of financial assets we have available, and the ability to raise that 700,000 gallons to a higher figure.
Well, I think, too, you also have, when considering this, and keep in mind, this is what is outside of our target areas, is what we're talking about. We also, we want to encourage development and, but not, and also continue to encourage, expand our infrastructure so that we get more customers. And at the same point in time, I don't want to discourage the developer from making the investment. So, those are two additional considerations when I sit and think about the presentation.
Mr. Messler, you had a point.
I just wanted to make you aware that we have talked to both Madison and Mayodan, and they had, Bill, I think that you were at the last meeting, did they both agree to, agree for excess capacity?
MOU?
Yes.
Yeah, they both approved the MOU in the last meeting. I think, in an offline meeting, it sounded like Mayodan leadership is open to future, you know, they obviously don't promise it, didn't need it, and like to leave that open for the future. And Madison asked about that, and Madison, a conduit, was talking about taking that bottleneck out, that CIP stuff was talking about. And they know that there's a need, and they asked, they asked quite honestly, the board being most recently, if that was more capacity going through Mayodan, or when we're looking at wastewater treatment. And we have to look at all of HIBO.
But, I'm just interjecting, there's no reference to see if the 700,000 include that MOU that was just approved. So, would be additional capacity at this point, that 700 is what we have, even with the new MOU.
But what I'm understanding, Bill, to say is, they're open to more. Certainly, they're not going to obligate everything to the county, but what kind of capacity numbers are they sitting at?
Mayodan wastewater treatment, they have a four and a half gallon per day plan. They're probably not hitting third of that right now. They're probably less than 1.5. Except on wet days, these older systems on West Park County have inflowing information. I'd say they're probably just hitting third. And again, capacity, I think, is there, but like any municipality there, they've breached the MOU, but, and they say, yes, if we still have it in the future, and the need they were discussing, I think they think probably, and I don't think they, will there be any expenses to them to try to get rid of that? They just like to get close to that, and know that. I think I've heard, not even in a conversation with them, they, some of their play have dropped because of, you know, they've drawn back on water use.
But, sorry, but I do also think it's important to note around Eric's point and to Bill, for increased capacity, there will be increased infrastructure needs, especially around sewer. So, as, and even with the 700,000, there will be, and I'm not exactly sure what that capacity number is, but it's about, we're going to have to make Madison pump station, and of course, may not grade, et cetera, it's going to be about $2.7 million. And if we do water booster pump at the corporate park, future expansion, that's not 1.1. So, I do think it's important, as you, Commissioner Pirtle, has mentioned, if you think about resources for some of these, you know, smaller development projects that we don't forget about, large dollars are going to have to be expended at some point to continue to build out this portion of the county.
We've developed a lot of those CIP numbers, too. They exist, and there's some mapping that Eric's got that's operating in the background of some things, and they come back to you in the future.
So, we're looking at about almost $4 million of upgrades that eventually we know we're going to have to make, because we will continue to grow that area.
And Commissioner Pirtle, when I was answering that question, I felt like I was answering wastewater, because water is probably a little easier to get than the increase there.
Other questions from the Commissioners?
As far as any, excuse me, as far as any areas of growth, I'm certainly hopeful that we're relying on our citizen group and their input with the UDO, and not relying on staff for those growth areas.
Yes, the future land use map that was presented, and that's in this presentation, was vetted by them. In fact, it was modified- In fact, it was modified, because I presented a draft to, to staff, and then we said, all right, let's get the committee together. And so it was after that meeting that we presented this, the last round. And, you know, we're still in the midst of all of this, right? We're still trying to weigh all of these different decisions as well, so we're, we're on that, on that same course.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd like also to see what other counties are doing, too. If you can, provide them with whatever you present us to, so I can see what other counties are doing. I mean, we're not reinventing the wheel.
You're not.
It's been done before, so let's see what other counties are doing.
Yeah, we've probably reached out to, close to 10 other jurisdictions throughout the last three months, and so those are reflected here. I, I didn't want to get any more long-winded than I already am. But for the most part, people are, jurisdictions are expanding sewer and, or water into certain areas, and developers are having to run it, you know, from those, because people just don't have the resources to do that. Or like you all said, like, and that goes kind of without saying, you all might say, hey, we're gonna take $250,000 a year for any, just pick any one of these policies, and say, hey, this is the max you're gonna allot towards any of these, but you're gonna have to set, set some number for that.
Most, most places are probably not losing $600,000 a year on their water and sewer.
That's probably right.
True.
Ron.
I just want that out there for the public, because I hear that we're doing something a little bit different.
Yeah.
Than a lot of places may be doing, but we're in a much different situation.
Need to grow a customer base.
We've gotta have a customer base.
And that's what I was getting at when I was talking about, growing the customer base without discouraging development, so to speak. It's a, it's a fine line. I know Lance and his staff has done a magnificent job in reducing that number, and along with the banks, but it's still, we're subsidizing our enterprise fund from the general fund to the tune of, what is about four next year?
Yeah.
About four. It's gone down, but it's gonna be about four next year.
Ronny, your point?
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna comment on what Commissioner Pearl and Berger both said about, a lot of these policies that we looked at from other municipalities or counties, they have very healthy enterprise funds, sort of the opposite of what we have, and they can afford to do some of these expansions out of that enterprise fund money. And Commissioner Travis, to your question, we did look at, at several of them, and most of what we found are compiled in Eric's list of recommendations. But again, a lot of those places have funds in place to pay for expansion.
Right. My, my, my biggest concern is, I want, I want to be able to read what other counties are doing. I understand y'all did the research, I want to see it, so I can develop my opinion, because several options I like, one of the options I don't like is spending a certain amount of money every year on projects, because to me, that, that leads to misuse and abuse, because it all, you know, we're not gonna be up here forever, and you might get a different board that might want to help their friend or buddy out and spend $100,000 on a project they got, and I just need something fair and equal across the board for everybody, so nobody can have any kind of misuse or abuse on it. That's, that's all I'm asking.
Out of curiosity, was Handy Sanitary one of the districts you looked at?
Which one?
Handy Sanitary.
That's in Montgomery.
It does Montgomery and Davidson and...
God bless. No, we didn't.
Well, that's how not to do it.
Yeah, that's not how.
Other questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, we had two, we had ours and we had Handy.
Now, were you hoping to walk away with a steer, because I don't believe we're ready to give you the steer?
Excuse me, if you don't mind, our goal was to, as we had mentioned before, we wanted to provide you all with options, so I guess we've kind of done what we needed to do as far as provide options, and we'll get additional information out about the other, what other counties do. Guess the next step, we'll get direction from people, from you all, as far as, as you absorb these options, just give us direction as far as what option you would like us to proceed, or options.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Chairman, we don't have to pick a option, we can implement certain aspects of each option and make our own option, right?
Well, certainly, and my expectation would be, over time, our priorities are gonna change, and would it, would affect necessarily the option, general procedures that we want to follow. I don't see it as a static situation.
Right, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Is that fair, Eric?
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just think we need, we need something in place to give us some guidance on, on, in this particular area. And I understand what my colleague, Mr. Commissioner Travis is saying, but, you know, we got before us the, the gentleman who, and staff who has done the, the research.
Right.
They provided us with their best synopsis of what others are doing, although they didn't name which counties is doing which out in the margin, they still provided us with, with the others are doing, and I just hope that this board, at some point in time in the near future, we move to give the manager some guidance, because I think he's been waiting, and we've had situations come before us here in the last six months, and as Commissioner Travis stated also, that we want to be fair and consistent with, with our, with our, with our decisions. And to do that, I think we need guidelines in place.
I, I agree, but another thing you said earlier there, Commissioner Pearl, had to do with resources. Right now, we're a little insecure about resources on, on all budget fronts, so I, I agree with you about some sort of basic starting point.
Oh, I'm, I'm saying, we just need the guidelines. Resources will dictate what we can do, but when we got the resources, then we, you know, the time to do the guidelines is, is, is not when you got the money, but have it, when you have it, have a plan in place so that you can execute.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm with you. I definitely like the, I guess, algorithm of cost sharing aspect of it. I, I like that coming up with a formula per house, if somebody's gonna develop, we don't know, we'll, we'll call share, I like that, but there's other things I like. And I know Commissioner Berger mentioned something about liens, and I'm interested in that, too. I just, I just didn't want to do anything to hinder any kind of growth. Some people don't like having property if they gotta put a lien on it, you know, and I don't know how that aspect works, you know, so I just gotta do a little more research on my part, I guess.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if you found, I haven't found any other jurisdiction that's done that.
I didn't see any that were doing that specific law.
And I definitely agree, this board, I think we're all in agreement that we should invest a certain amount every year towards these projects to, to get that dwelling number up. I just don't know what the number is.
But you indicated the other jurisdictions that you looked at were not suffering the deficit that we are in enterprise fund.
They're funding projects out of their enterprise funds, and that tells me they have healthy enterprise funds that they can do that with. I didn't see anywhere, I don't think where they were funding out of general fund, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, I would love to hear what the other commissioners, what, what they want to see, so we can pinpoint this down, so give the staff direction.
I don't think we're ready to do that.
Our, our current policy is a discretionary policy based on available funds, and that discretionary policy, at least the ones that we've seen at this point, look at the area of the county, the potential growth and the potential number of customers off of whatever we run, whether they're primary customers or secondary customers. Those are the, the criteria that we've gone with up to this point. So beyond that criteria, what, if any, changes to that existing policy would anybody want to see? The, the idea of whether it's developer investment, whether it's liens, the lien part would coincide with developer investment, and, and just kind of be a subpart of that. And so the real question is, at this point, whether we want to amend that current policy or continue on as is. I think in the upcoming budget Lance put, I remember, $100,000.
Another $100,000. That fund has roughly 650 in it.
650 at this point. You know, the, the current year out of the general fund, roundabout 350 was spent, the other 300, and so was spent out of the state funds that we received for water and sewer expansion, which is now exhausted.
Will be after we commit that other amount.
Yes, and so we've got 650 in the fund now annually, if we can continue to fund that, that gives us a base to work off of, and it, it's really just a matter of what, if any, changes to that current policy do we want to, want to work off of?
Well, I mean, I definitely see that we gotta change something. I mean, because one developer, we're running it all through their development, the next developer, we can't even get it to their property line. So we definitely gotta have some policies in place so we're be equal across the board on any kind of requirements.
I don't think either one I voted on ran all through anybody's development.
Well, Harry Rexstraw's property, we ran it all the way down their streets for them.
No, we didn't. We did it right away.
Right away.
Right, we didn't run it into any interior streets, so...
Stayed in the state right away.
Yeah. And the other one, we got it, I mean, it's to the edge of the property.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I, I would like to see, or that I think this board should consider, and, and is that when we start looking at outside of our targeted growth areas, I think we need to look at a realistic number for our return on investment.
True.
And whatever we decide on, if this board selects, I think here in example one, he's listed as a 10-year ROI, and if we get outside of that 10-year, that's on the developer. You know, he prorated to, and I think Commissioner Berger and I had a brief conversation about this.
Yeah, I like that.
I, I think that that, to me, that's one of the things that we need to, to, to think about, and I don't think, well, to me, I think it's, doing it, we are, it's a, it's a smart move with county dollars, and, and I think a developer, if he's serious about it, he will see that as a, as an opportunity for him.
Yeah, I like it.
Or...
Well, I don't know what the magic figure is, but I agree in concept with you, and I would ask the county manager, from a pure financial point of view, has Pat looked at that, does she have a recommendation on what a reasonable time length for an ROI that's...
She's, she's going based on our experience. I mean, I know that when, when I was in Montgomery, we had a 10-year return on investment that we looked at typically, and you can ask Eric what his experience is.
What's your recommendation?
I, I mean, I, if you want my honest opinion, I feel like 10 years is very generous.
Do what, say it again?
I feel like 10 years is very generous, but reasonable. I, you, you know, you, you still are taking on the risk, right? The other thing is, you could look at a, a potential slow build-out, and there's a lot of things that can happen that affect an ROI. So I think, I think 10 years is generous. I mean, if you, and you guys are serious about trying to attract development and get people going, so I'm, I'm not saying that word in a bad way. I'm saying like, you know, that's...
Very fair.
Come, come do business, is what, is what, is what's that saying to me.
That's exactly what I'm gonna say.
Now, I could have written item, on option one, five, a little bit better, because it's exactly what you're saying there, Commissioner. You know, the developer will be responsible for any expenses necessary to ensure that the county ROI is met within 10 years. You know, if additional dollars are required in order to make that ROI, say you did your formula right now and it came out to 15 years, well, the developer have to come in to offset that, to make that amount come down, and that money would have to come into the pot immediately. Now, there's some other things you can start doing with this option. You can say, it's gonna be a, say you hit the 10-year mark, well, you're gonna come in with half of that upfront, and then after, after you sell so many lots, it comes back to you in the form of a grant. You, you can do a variety of things like that, pulling kind of out your economic development hat to kind of create some protection. But I do think working around option one, if you all want the simplest, because it's, it's basically a modification of your current policy, as, as you just mentioned. But the problem is the protection, because it's my understanding that you have got, you all aren't very excited about bonds, you know, because it's, it's the other way that you could protect yourself as well.
How, how would that work?
You could require them to provide a bond that, that they get houses built by a certain amount, and you've got, you guys are receiving fees on those, and if that's not met, then you pull that bond to get some percentage of that back to the county. I mean, it's gonna be a tough sale.
I mean, that was one of our board's concerns, too. These developers would say they would build, for example, 100 houses, and we would spend all this money to invest for them to do that, but it's no guarantee that they would build 100 houses. And they got a certain amount, and a lot of developers were complaining, hey, you can't, you know, hold me to 10 years to build 10 houses, or 100 houses.
Well, I think eventually you gotta get there.
Yeah.
You know, you, you gotta put your money where your mouth is.
Exactly. If the market can't stand it, why, why are you taking on the, why should the county take on the burden, right? That's kind of the logic around it.
And I like that idea.
And we would be negligent with public money if we committed, taking on a greater risk than the developer.
Is other counties doing the ROI with a bond?
Um, I don't know that I saw a combination like that.
And you didn't see liens either, is that correct?
No, didn't see liens.
I guess life is good if you got a lot of money in your enterprise fund, right?
Yeah.
But I do remember that David Couch said that for the High Point development, he had to put a bond, and then he got the money back, and he felt about that whole High Point area.
Well, that's fair. That's fair to me, I like it.
Yeah, but that's, wasn't the bond, like, the ROI bond combination?
No, it was more...
That was actually paying to run the whole line out there to the development.
Yeah, he's like, he hated that the High Point paid back.
Well, let me ask you this, the other jurisdictions you looked at, Eric, did they have 10-year payouts on their ROI?
I'm not sure where the, I don't know if the 10-year came from your experience, Lance.
Came from my experience, I don't know if it came from anywhere else.
I don't know that I've seen that.
You can make seven, you can make a 12.
What's normal?
What's normal is probably something closer to option five, target growth strategy, this is where we're running water and sewer, you want to tap into our line, then you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to pay to get it there. Unless it's part of the strategy and it's part of the CIP, and, and that plan has already been played out.
Well, we're right back where, I guess, Senator Berger, I mean, Kevin Berger was talking about, we get a certain amount of money every year, we invest it the way we think target growth's gonna go.
When you look at the land use plan, and you talk to economic development, and you see how much resources it's gonna take to, to get you all to where I think you were trying to get to, it's, it's a lot of resources, that's a, that's, that's quite a capital outlay right there.
It's aggressive.
So that's why, and I'm still delving into these numbers, make sure you all have all the information you need to make the decision that you want to make, but, but I understand the pressure, too. Like, we, we need some more customers in the pipeline, so it's...
Well, gentlemen, I, I think whatever else we do, we need to have a time period that we think is reasonable to get our investment back, be that 10 years or, or whatever expert assessors can tell us what that is, because that's, that's gonna be a starting point to determine how much money we would need to allocate each year.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is such an important issue, it's really hard to, to come to a conclusion during an open meeting, a commission meeting, maybe a half-day work session on just this issue so we can resolve it.
Or, Mr. Chairman, maybe we should, you should consider appointing a, a committee, perhaps getting the manager and, perhaps Commissioner Hall, since he has a background in construction, or Kevin?
Get Kevin on there.
Since he has a background in water and sewer. And, and let them come up with a, a recommendation to our, to us as a, as a body as a whole, and move forward. We can sit and have this discussion all night.
We just can't wait another six months for... We just can't wait another six months for this to be done.
Well, I think this is important for the entire land use plan, to get this piece sorted out early. And you guys, quality control, I check, and certainly Commissioner Hall would come with more experience with the construction part of it. And we got to have the county manager, and Eric, we've got to have you and our engineer and residents, basically the same folks that are, that I'm looking at right now, would seem a committee that could do this, Mr. Pearl. And either Mr. Hall representing us, or one of us can go along with him.
I'd definitely like to have Kevin and Commissioner Hall on.
That's fine.
I mean, I like both their ideas, what they got, so I like their input on it.
I think this board would be well represented by Commissioner Hall and Berger on this. And if I'm hearing, a motion to put a task force together to assess this, consisting of the county manager, the three of you, and Commissioner Berger and Hall.
I'll definitely make the motion. I just want a deadline set for it to come back before, so we can go ahead and put it in place.
Well, I don't know if I have to have a deadline. I'd kind of like to...
Since they both kind of run their own business, they're going to have to coordinate their schedules.
Yeah.
We'll start.
I would ask you to come back and recommend when you can give us a reasonable sort of...
Speed you.
All right, I'm taking Mr. Commissioner Travis's motion.
The former committee.
I'll second it. It's a volunteer in two of my colleagues.
Did we drop off your Christmas card list there, Charlie Hall? I've been off Mr. Berger's list for a long time.
Well, I mean, Commissioner Berger and Commissioner Hall.
Moved in second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of this task force going to work and giving us at some reasonable time, like our next meeting, how much time you do need.
We don't meet once in July, so it'll be August.
Lance, between you and Ronnie, you can work out the details of time and when and where, all of that.
Okay.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by nay. Thank you, Commissioners Berger and Hall for being volunteers.
Thank you, Eric.
Eric?
Yeah, thank you, Eric.
I'm going to ask one more question of Ronnie.
Yes, sir.
All right. Between you guys, can you live with what we just did?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Did you include Lee as part of the group?
I mean, at this point, I just...
I think it's up to the committee to draw in whoever they need expertise-wise.
I mean, I need Bill Lester. I need some of those members of the citizen group, and Charlie, and Lance.
I would definitely ask for a developer.
And beyond that, until we get some ideas in place. I mean, you've got to come up with the ideas before you come up with where it's going.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I would naturally assume you have license to choose who you want to help you out.
Yeah, right half the county.
Okay, item 12 has two new items under new business. Golden Leaf Foundation.
Okay. So we'll start with the Golden Leaf Foundation. So last Wednesday, we received the official award letter from, County Manager Messler did, from Golden Leaf, awarding $2.2 million for the 500,000 gallon elevated storage tank, which will be in the South Rockham Corporate Business Park, and it will serve Ontext, Project Optic, but it will also serve that whole area. So not only industries, but also any residential developments or homes that are on that line for pressure and flow. So we would like to have approval, to have Lance sign this. The attorney has looked it over and doesn't have any issues with the agreement, but we'd like to get this signed and sent back with a July 1 start date.
Okay, understand.
Okay.
$2.2 million. Anybody moved to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Moved in second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed by nay.
And then, are you ready for the next one?
Ready for the next one.
Okay. The next one is the subordination agreement that we have spoken about previously. This is between the county and Carter Bank and Trust and 287 Partnership, which is going to be the former ball building property. This will move the county into a second position under a $5.4 million deed of trust for 287 with Carter Bank and Trust. So we just need formal approval to sign these documents and...
I'll make a motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion for approval.
We have a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to execute those on our behalf.
I'll amend my motion.
Second. And second. Further discussion. Commissioners are all clear what exactly is happening here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by nay.
Thank you.
How high is that water tower going to be? Do you have any idea? How high?
150 to 160 feet around that one.
Great place for some...
What sort of pressure head are you going to have out of that?
At the base of the tank, they'll be in the 60 to 60 pound PSR range, and it's pretty much a half-inch淤淤路. As an odd fact, that ground is soft.
Okay. Are you going to tell me our towers are going to sink into the soft soil or something?
No, we're going to drive piles to keep it from doing that, but it costs a little more to do that. But it is, you expect it to be tight clay and rock in that part of the road, but it is salt.
Yeah, you don't remember the previous conversation you and I had, and we talked about water pressure for fire suppression at the hydrant. So you're comfortable that we're going to meet those requirements?
We would have it in the 60s there and anywhere that area serves, and the flow will be 2,500 over 3,000 gallons a minute.
Pretty good.
And that sits right in the middle of the corporate park.
Any increase, Lee, you'll take care of.
I trust your engineering, but it's a key factor there.
That's right.
All right. Gentlemen, if you have no further questions in regard to this, we're going to move on to commissioner comments. Mr. Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everybody coming out. Let me just say that I appreciate all the citizens of Rockham County. I know there's a lot of stuff going on in the world and in the United States, and I just ask everybody to treat everybody like you want to be treated. Let's respect each other, and let's respect our spaces, and, you know, just treat everybody like you feel like you should be treated, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Travis. Commissioner Berger?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We had a wonderful beginning of our meeting, honoring Mr. Rankin, his 100th birthday, his service to our country, and we certainly appreciate his family being here. And then the recognition, the selfless acts of the three individuals, Mr. Tyrone Wade, Alex Chehatley, and Andy Flincham, saving that gentleman and his girlfriend from the burning car. It certainly didn't go without me noticing. You could not find a more diverse group of people that put aside their differences or, I'm sorry, I didn't even mean to, the differences we see in the country today certainly were not evident when someone's life was on the line. And we certainly appreciate their selfless acts and standing up for the gentleman in need.
That's right. Good comment.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
That's real good.
Commissioner Pearl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Berger echoed exactly what he just said. He went first, so he got to say it first. It was an honor and a privilege to be here for the resolution of Mr. Rankin. That's one of my favorite things, is when we recognize one of the great members of the greatest generation, and we have one in attendance tonight. And anytime that I feel like that I personally have an opportunity to have an audience with one of those members of that generation, it's a privilege, and I don't take them for granted. And then, secondly, yeah, that was quite a story we had tonight on that recognition of those heroes, hometown heroes, that rescued the two people in that car accident. So unfortunate that someone lost their life. But those three individuals that jumped out of their vehicle, risked their own safety, their own lives to put out a burning, a car on fire, and pull another human being from a car that they didn't know, just says a whole lot about their character and the folks here in Rockingham County. Commissioner Berger stated, or said earlier, what a diverse crowd it was. It was a very diverse, members of the lifesavers as well as the victims. And it's a shame that, you know, the news media outlets that shows all the civil unrest in our country wasn't here tonight to see that diverse crowd, the human aspect of what we recognized here tonight. It's, this past Sunday, Mayor David Myers kind of led the charge on the Pray For Your Country Sunday, and talk about healing for our country. And I know we talked about that here in Rockingham County, and a lot of churches participated. I want to thank Mayor for leading that charge, but that's something we should continue to do. We're very fortunate to live in Rockingham County where you have folks just like that right there, those such a selfless act. And the human beings, that, the human elements, so to speak, of that, of their kindness is overwhelming. I've seen a lot of tears flowing as that story was being told. And if you weren't here to see a mother thank three gentlemen for saving the life of their son, Mr. Good Show, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I agree. It was a wonderful demonstration of the best of humanity tonight, and it was a blessing to be here. It was wonderful to see the room full after so many weeks of isolation, and us kind of meeting here by ourselves. It was wonderful to have a lot of people here, and that was very nice as well. I'd also like to take this opportunity to wish happy birthday to Ms. Leola Metter. Now, Ms. Metter has been a lifelong educator here in Rockingham County. She was actually my typing teacher at Holmes Middle School years ago. But she's also been a leader with the 4H, the Betsy and Jeff Penn Center, and also across the state. They've, she has gotten many awards. She has actually been inducted into the electric awards endowment and is named in her honor. She's been elected to the Hall of Fame in the 4H here in North Carolina. So happy birthday, Ms. Metter. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. I echo all of the praise for our heroes, the ones from 1945, and also the ones from 1919, 2019. And if all of our citizens exhibit those sort of characteristics, we have reason to be very optimistic. I want to take off some on what Commissioner Pearl was talking about, and it started with Mayor David Myers, but it includes all the mayors and the commissioners of this county in support of Unity Sunday. And I would say to the public, Unity Sunday was an opportunity for folks to get together where they could, but as a whole county, pray for unity and the sort of characteristics that we observe tonight or honor tonight. And Mayor Myers deserves full credit for that. But it's obvious at this point that it's going to take more than prayers, it's going to take effort from individuals. And I think we have that sort of population here in Rockingham County, and I hope we put action behind those words. And we take not only inspiration, but a good example from our local heroes that we were able to see tonight. That said, gentlemen, you will be happy to know that we do not have a closed session, so I would accept a motion to adjourn. Move?
Second.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed by nay.